...themselves when they leave an interaction. Is that how I would have wanted a member of my family to have been treated? That is a basic question that cuts through everything, and if people answer it, yes, that is how I would have wanted a member of my family treated, then we are on the right track. But there is more than that. We pursued becoming part of the National Initiative for Building Community Trust and Justice because we knew and we know that there is mistrust in the community, and we knew and we know that there are solutions we have to find here at the city and in the police department to build that trust again. She brought in the Office of Justice programs to make recommendations about an early intervention system. I can't say enough how rare that is. I don't know another chief in the country who has or would do that. But it's important for the community, and it's important for us, and it's important for our city employees, our officers, that if they are struggling early, we catch it early so it doesn't become problems for them, so it doesn't become problems for the community. And we are in, you know, we are, we are making that real, and there's been deep and wide, and people testify, community engagements to make that happen and happen well. Last week, just last week, the chief and I invited the, the cops office from the Department of Justice to come in and do an after-action report on the occupation of the precinct and how the city handled it. And I want to be clear to whomever testified about that, they aren't investigating us. We invited them in because I stand by our officers, I stand by the city response, and the chief and I both know that if there is something we could have done better, if there's information we need to have, if there's something to be learned, we want to learn it, we want to know, and we know we need to bring folks in from the outside to make sure every voice is heard and everyone can trust that outcome. So we have made that request. The extent to which Councilmember Connaught or any of these testifiers have questions about how the city or the police chief handled the city, or I handled the situation at the precinct, we are asking that someone come in and answer those questions. There will be that opportunity. That is the kind of police chief that Janaye Harto is, that willingness and that openness to ask the question, how can we be better, even in the most difficult circumstances, even in the things that are most challenging? Her willingness to ask that question is the hallmark of the kind of chief we need in the 21st century. And just this week, just this week, the officers of the Minneapolis Police Department have been going through procedural justice training. It is one of the pillars of the National Initiative for Building Community Trust and Justice, along with racial reconciliation and implicit bias. Procedural justice, they have been going through that training this week. Again, I cannot emphasize strongly enough how rare that is in a police department across the country. We have not been told to do this. We have chosen to do it. No one came in from the federal government and said, "Minneapolis, you have a problem. You'd better do X, Y, Z." We are choosing to do all of this under the leadership and direction of Chief Janaye Harto. For the 21st century, that is the chief that you want, the one who invites the department and invites us all as a city to do what other places are having to be asked to do. We are not, we have not had to be asked as much as we are volunteering and continuing to listen, to learn, and to do more. That is the kind of chief that we need in the 21st century. All of that, and she's a cop from stem to stern, she knows that officers are going out there every single day, you know, working their guts out to make sure that the city is safe, and that she, the MPD 2.0 at its base, is giving wind beneath the wings of the officers who want to do their jobs well and up to the standards that we would all expect every day. To make that explicitly what is expected in the Minneapolis Police Department gives support to all of our great officers who are out there every day doing their best to make sure that we stay safe as a community and to make sure that when we are experiencing crime, that when we are experiencing something negative, that we get the best possible response. Change doesn't happen overnight, but it happens. But we're not after change in Minneapolis, we're after transformation, and Janaye Harto is the chief who can lead us there.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion before us. I'm not seeing anyone else in queue, any discussion on the motion? Remembering the motion, motion for reappoint. All right, to all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and thank you very much, Chief Harto, and thank you, so many people who came and spoke. We really appreciate that. I have a question for my colleagues. We had planned to have, because there are two public hearings remaining, for one of those public hearings, we have, at the moment, six speakers signed up, and I don't know if others will volunteer to speak. And we had planned to have a discussion today of the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board's proposal for a special levy referendum. So I am going to just ask for a little guidance on whether we should continue to have that presentation. It is a very important presentation, and we have staff prepared, or whether we should postpone this to a future meeting. So I don't know if there are comments from colleagues with their thoughts. I just note that because we have two more public hearings remaining with six speakers, at least for one of them, I wanted to ask the question. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to throw into the mix that there are some notable items on our council agenda which perhaps need to be discussed today as well, in particular for me, the situation with the animal control ordinance. I, I just worry we're going to run out of time. I do think the presentation with regard to the park situation is hugely important, but I just wonder if we're going to have people sitting here till 3:00 this afternoon. We should do it right, and it should take the amount of time we need. Maybe it needs to be right after the council meeting on Friday or something. I don't know. I'm, I'm worried about the importance of that, the amount of attention it will receive, and the council agenda, which is in front of us where there are some items that perhaps need to be discussed. I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know the solution.
I appreciate that, and I asked the question because this is a very important discussion, and it's coming after some very important public hearings, and so I just want to make sure that we are giving the right amount of time for good discussion. Councilmember Gordon, you had some thoughts.
I just had two thoughts. One is, how time-sensitive is it? Is there some reason why we would need to take up the park board resolution today or this week, or not delay it? And the other one is, do you think a lot of people have come because of this issue because it was noticed on the agenda, and there might be as much interest in it as the public hearings or some of the other things from the public?
Thank, thank you. And I, and I note that as well, I just, I, so I think it's a balancing of trying to be respectful of the fact this was noticed on the agenda, but noting the time and the remaining items. Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I, I would ask the city attorney, Mr. Ginder, if, if there is a time sensitivity about the park board that sending back to us, overriding the mayor's veto and then sending the action to us, are, are we charged in any way to respond to that within a certain time, timeframe? And that may be part of the decision.
Madam Chair, President Johnson, there is no time sensitivity to this matter. I mean, this could be delayed until Friday or another cycle, and it won't impact any relevant time cycles for the park board or for this council.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, and I, I guess, I, I do see people here from the park board and the, and the Board of Estimate. Are committee members willing, are the whole members willing to stay? Could be an extended timeframe.
I'm not seeing, are, are committee members willing to stay? So there are a couple of folks who maybe cannot. I'm really looking to my colleagues, and we do have President Liz Walensky is here, Carol Becker from the Board of Estimate and Taxation, and I don't know if you have any, yes, please, President Walensky.
Thank you, Chair Glenn and Councilmember, Madam Mayor. To be perfectly honest, if you wanted to postpone this till March, when our superintendent will be available to help make her presentation, we wouldn't mind.
Right, and, and I, just for the public, we had already asked the superintendent to come, and we were very much planning to give her time. I think there is, this is, again, I will just note, this is a big discussion, and there's, I don't know if we will accommodate everything together or divide, but we definitely want to give time to the superintendent. All right, so thank you for your thoughts. Ms. Becker, did you want to share a thought on this?
The thing I wanted to say is that what we are really waiting for also is whether or not there's going to be any materials from the city attorney's office on this, which may be in conflict with what our understanding is of, of how a referendum would be executed. So even if this was postponed, if there are materials that are going to be produced, it would be helpful to have those, to understand what the city's position may be in regards to this. This isn't your typical, like, school referendum, and so if there are issues around this, we really should know that, know that in advance, and have time to prepare it for it, if that's really what's going to happen. And there were, it was noted that there would be some materials-
From the perspective of the Board and Estimate and Taxation?
Hmm?
Okay.
For the referendum question.
Right, okay, all right. Thank you very much. Okay, I, I think my, my thought is, is that I will move to postpone this, I'm just a little, I'm not sure where to postpone it to, and I'm not sure if we could add it on Friday as a discussion item without a special meeting notice or something. So, Council President?
Madam Chair, I would just ask how crowded your next committee, the whole agenda would be, which would be in two weeks?
I, I think we will know a little bit more about that, well, I, we are going to receive a report, so let me just line out for committee members, and I apologize for folks who are here for the public hearing, but let's just finish, finish this. But next cycle, we will have a report from the Workplace Regulations Partnership, so we will hear that presentation. I'm sure it will be a substantial presentation. How long the agenda item is really depends on council members, on how much they want to discuss and debate. So I think we potentially could include this item next cycle, and, and that would work, and then that would probably prepare us well for the superintendent coming in March. All right?
Make the motion?
Okay, so Council President has made the motion to postpone to our next cycle discussion. Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, all right. We have two more public hearings in front of us. The first is the reappointment of the city attorney, and I have, and, and I think, again, I've asked department heads if they wanted to say something or not, and I haven't heard a special request from the city attorney or from the city coordinator. So I think we will go ahead and open the public hearing and then conduct things that way. So again, this is the reappointment of city attorney Susan Siegel to the appointed position of, of city attorney for a two-year term beginning January 4th, 2016, and I've opened the public hearing, and Chuck Turcik is the first speaker, Michelle Gross is the second, and then Alan Morrison is the third. Mr. Turcik? And for those in the media room, yes, okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, committee members, still Chuck Turcik, still 21 South Portland. I am here to testify that two plus two does not equal five. As you can see from the overhead, under the CRA ordinance, the chief of police was required to base his disciplinary decision in CRA sustained cases, quote, "on the adjudicated facts as determined by the Civil Review Authority Board," unquote. But Chief of Police Tim Dolan would regularly notify the CRA board in writing that he was not issuing discipline in a CRA sustained case because of his, quote, "disagreement with the adjudicated facts as determined by the CRA board," unquote. No elected or appointed city official ever publicly said, "Chief, I think you may be violating the ordinance, you may be violating the law." Not the mayor, not a single member of the city council, which included most of you, and not the city attorney. Instead, city attorney Susan Siegel, I have no idea what her motivations were, issued an opinion that the two statements on the overhead are not inconsistent, that Chief Dolan was not violating the ordinance. That may be consistent in some quantum mechanical world or in some parallel universe, but they clearly are not consistent in the world we live in. You won't ask the city attorney about this absurd ruling and what motivated her to come to this conclusion. If the city attorney says so, then we have to accept it. Nonsense. You don't have to be a child to know that the emperor is wearing no clothes, you don't have to be a mathematician to know that two plus two does not equal five, and you don't have to be a lawyer to know that those two statements are inconsistent, that Chief Tim, Tim Dolan was a serial violator of the CRA ordinance. I expect that if you again reappoint Ms. Siegel two years from now, I'll have to return and testify once again that two plus two does not equal five, it equals four. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turcik. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Turcik. Ms. Gross, and then Alan Morrison, and then Dave Bickin.
Members of the committee, President Johnson and Mayor Hodges, my name is Michelle Gross, and I'm president of the organization Communities United Against Police Brutality, a Minneapolis-based organization, and I am speaking to oppose the reappointment of Susan Siegel to the position of city attorney. Her tenure has been highly problematic, and she has failed in her responsibilities and does not warrant reappointment. As city attorney, Ms. Siegel's actions include improperly restricting access to government data by way of making novel interpretations of the Data Practices Act. In fact, our organization has had to sue the city of Minneapolis twice successfully to get access to data that was in fact public based on, again, her actions to try to prevent us from having it. Further, at this particular time, it's our understanding that all data that's to be released to the members of the community must pass through her office first, and it would appear that her office is the cause of significant delays in public data being released to the community. Ms. Siegel's office engages in what we call a scorched earth policy of, or practice of vigorously prosecuting those who have been brutalized by the police as a means of limiting the potential for civil liability suits. That is an unacceptable practice. Despite this, people continually are able to successfully sue the city to, related to police misconduct incidents, and thus cost the taxpayers millions of dollars throughout her tenure. At the same time, her office refuses to prosecute police who brutalize and harm the community, and she has issued legal opinions that validated the prior police chief's failure to discipline complaints, as you heard from Mr. Turcik. These actions contribute to a failure by the city to hold police accountable and protect the public in meaningful ways. Under Ms. Siegel's watch, numerous activists have been prosecuted for engaging in First Amendment-protected activities. In addition, her office has, has made new and recent concerted efforts to prosecute attorneys for upholding the rights of their activist clients. One recent example of such prosecution was of an attorney at an immigrant rights protest when, who was hit by a truck that attempted to, to drive through the protest. Ms. Siegel's office did not prosecute the truck driver, but instead prosecuted the attorney. That attorney was found not guilty at trial, in a bench trial, I might add, clearly indicating that the prosecution was without merit. Ms. Siegel's office is currently engaged in the medicative prosecution of attorney Jordan Kushner, who has engaged in legal activity of, of videotaping police conduct toward protesters. I sent to your, to your offices a letter outlining this case and some additional information. In short, Ms. Siegel's office has advanced prosecution solely to punish communities and attorneys for First Amendment-protected activities, has misused the criminal justice system against victims of police brutality, and while failing to hold abusive police accountable, has implemented barriers to access to public data, and has misused her position to issue politically motivated legal opinions. She is unfit for this office, and her reappointment would be a disservice to the residents of Minneapolis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gross. Alan Morrison, and then Dave Bickin, and then Claudio Rivera.
Hello again, Alan Morrison. I oppose the reappointment, and the same in my incident. The city attorney's office refused to look at any evidence that I had. If my record was not as clean as it is, I probably would be incarcerated at this time. Instead, I mean, when I charged the police with police brutality, they can, they continued to try to charge me anyway. I had six pre-trials, which I had to take off of work. I even offered several times to meet with someone out the office to show this information, and was not interested. So me being a person of color, I don't think I had a chance, if like I say, I didn't have a squeaky clean record. I was, uh, found guilty before even going to trial. Luckily, all the charges was dropped only because of my insistence, you know, of my persistence and having a good record. If I had had any blemish, the state, the city attorney office would have ran right over me, and I'd probably be incarcerated at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dave Bickin, and then Claudio Rivera, and then John Schrauf-Franzel.
Thank you. My name is Dave Bickin of Minneapolis. In this case, I have no mixed feelings, I totally oppose the reappointment of Susan Siegel. I support what Jordan Kushner has written about the city's prosecution of his current case. There is, as he says, a difficult balance between representing the city government and representing the people of Minneapolis. You, as city leaders, do need to maintain a lawyer-client relationship with the city attorney, but she does not serve even you well when she gives the advice you want to hear rather than advice based on the law and the city charter. And she certainly did not serve the people well and their expressed desires, in her opinion, on the stadium. But in her role as a prosecutor, she has a very different responsibility. She must see that the law is enforced fairly, without bias, and without favoritism to the city government and the police. Now, the role of a defense attorney is to serve their clients, and even if those clients are found guilty or plead guilty, to get them the best possible deal. But for the prosecutor's role is not a mirror image of the defense attorney's role. The prosecutor's responsibility is to the truth and fairness, not to gathering the most convictions and the longest sentences. Susan Siegel regularly violates that responsibility. She sides with the police in their racially biased arrests. She is particularly strict in her prosecutions of those who have been abused by or injured by the police. She never prosecutes the police even in clearly, clear cases of perjury. This has a dramatic effect on people's lives, and the bias in prosecution has a dramatic effect in reinforcing racial inequality in housing and employment. Susan Siegel should not be reappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Claudio Rivera, and then our last signed-up speaker, John Schrauf-Franzel.
Hi, my name is Claudio Rivera again, and for the same reasons I spoke on earlier, as well as to echo the concerns of the last speaker and the Communities United Against Police Brutality, I oppose the reappointment of the city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker, yes, sir. Sorry, you have to walk all the way around. It's a little bit of a trick.
Hi.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I too oppose the reappointment of Ms. Siegel, and I'd like to validate what all the previous speakers said, and I agree with them. And I'm particularly outraged at her witch hunt against Jordan Kushner. What a waste of money. He is trying to defend the, the people against police brutality, and she sides with police brutality. I think she's a fine attorney, city attorney, if you're the 1%, so please do not reappoint her. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was our last speaker that has signed up. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this reappointment? Anyone else who would like to speak? I've not seen anyone, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And, I will go ahead and move this appointment so we can start this discussion. We do have two people in queue, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have the opportunity to serve on the committees that have been dealing with this, but I was, have been sick for about 10 days, so I was at home during the public hearing in the Public Safety Committee, and I had the opportunity to listen to a mass majority of the testimony on many of the appointments that have come up to date. And I am speaking in support of the reappointment of Susan Siegel. And I can say with great confidence, after being on the council for a fairly long number of years, I think she's the best city attorney we've ever had, and I think she will go down in history as being one of the best city attorneys we have ever had. And I think it's very unfortunate that a number of people here were here to disparage the work that she's done. I want to point to the fact that she has hired some amazing staff and promoted them through the process. There is a whole host of young women working in the city attorney's office who were not sure if they wanted to stay with the city. These are positions that you could be in the private sector, making twice as much money. She has fostered an environment of support for young women working in that office that has been unparalleled in my term on the council. I'll note she's also done an amazing job of assigning attorneys to the various departments that they work within. In particular, the attorneys assigned to committees that I work on, the Regulatory Services Attorney, the folks that work in zoning, and the folks that have been assigned to CPED. The city attorney is as much a manager of people as any other position in the city. She has appointed people who handle both the criminal and civil side, who have done what I believe a number of people want to see them do. In my ward, livability crimes are an enormous issue, and she has, I think, created a very good balance between supporting the elimination, for example, of some of the nuisance crimes that have created some of the, of the racial inequalities that we have seen, and has supported that while making sure that we're still prosecuting livability crimes, which is something that is, I think, quite critical in the ward that I represent, and I would guess in the wards that many of you represent. On the civil side, I think she has done an extremely good job, under the advice of the council, to try out the cases where we believe police brutality lawsuit should be tried and settle the ones that I think should be settled. This is a question of being able to create a very delicate balance. But ultimately, the city attorney's not, job is not to prosecute police. She's the attorney representing the people who work for the city, including the city council members and the police. So to suggest that she hasn't done a good job of prosecuting the police, that's not her job. And I'm glad it's not her job, because that in and of itself is a very political position to hold. So I am, I, I think my comments, I think, will be reflected on years from now when we look back and realize that Ms. Siegel perhaps is one of the best people who has ever done this job in the history of the city, and strongly recommend her reappointment.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President, and I'm also going to be supporting the, the reappointment, but I maybe have some reservations, and I thought it was worth noting because if people recall, I wasn't supportive last round, and I, that was, a lot of that was based on the stadium issue. And thank goodness, there hasn't been another stadium that we had to do between then and now. So we didn't need any opinions on it and all that, so that's to be celebrated. There's a lot, I think, that the city attorney's office has done. I just want to acknowledge many great things, but also an ability to be willing to work with other departments, other department heads, to, to see how valuable having the city attorney's office engaged in some other issues, whether it's with the police, the coordinator's office, health, housing, all of these things makes a really big difference. And I see that as a culture of the department, as, as sort of, what can we do to further the policies and to help? And there's an openness to that, which is very valuable. I did want to highlight concerns that I also have, though, you know, the, this most recent case about the attorney who was in war, too, I guess, at the University of Minnesota protest and was, was monitoring and observing, all of a sudden generated three press stories and a flurry of emails to me, and it's given me pause. And I think back, there have been other instances, and I just want to note, from my perspective, I, and I think this is shared by the attorney's office, but we really rely and depend on free speech and on the people's right to assemble and to protest and to come to their government with their grievances. That's kind of how we can do our democracy. We need that as elected officials and as policymakers, we depend on it, we want it to happen. Part of the role has to be to, how to protect those rights as well, and even the appearance that we're not protecting them, or even the appearance that somehow a lawyer that's been an advocate for that, and that's kind of his niche, is getting prosecuted. I think we really have to go out of our way to make sure this is fair, this is consistent, and, and I haven't had much of an opportunity to talk to the attorneys, but a, a little bit, and I've been reassured that this is, that this case is being dealt with just as any other case would be similarly, and we, and, and it's just critical that we do that, I believe, just, not only so we make better decisions and we have a better government, because we're living in an atmosphere of free speech where protest and assembly is really important, but also, I think, because the consent of the governed kind of depends on that, too. And we hit a tipping point every now and again where we start to, to, I think, lose the confidence of the public. So I'm, and I've had these kind of conversations with the city attorney, and I know that this is really key, and it's really been valuable to look at that. But without kind of the consent of the governed, where you don't have any ability to do anything. But when we have that confidence and trust, we can really do amazing things. So I really want to see that as a priority to look at. I'm obviously concerned about this case, but I obviously don't use my role as a council member to meddle in particular cases like that. So I want to just be able to bring it up to that level of, of ensuring that part of the role we can have is to make sure that people have their rights respected and they're able to practice them so that we can do the best job we can and have the best city we can. want to just be able to bring it up to that level of ensuring that part of the role we can have is to make sure that people have their rights respected, and they're able to practice them, so that we can do the best job we can and have the best city we can.
Thank you. Councilmember Yang?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. You know, two years ago, when I got on the council, the reappointment came up, and I was one of two council members that voted against the reappointment. And, you know, in that time, I had no interaction with Susan Siegel outside of just, you know, being here. And, you know, since that time, I will say this, that, you know, let me point out a couple of things. You know, we've seen, even in the press, situations where our city attorney has been, I guess, on the opposite end of the police union or the police federation. And, you know, I think when you're doing that, you know, I think going with logic of today, I mean, that means you're doing your job. You know, when folks have talked about how people continue to sue the city, and, you know, and we have settlements that happen and things like that, but, you know, I guess, if we're putting the burden of these settlements on Ms. Siegel, then we have to think about this, too. I mean, imagine what she has saved the city. I mean, imagine really what she has saved the city in terms of settlements. And I would just say, you know, whatever settlements we have, I mean, if not for Ms. Siegel, I mean, we probably would have paid double or triple that. And so I really appreciate that. You know, just seeing and working with her throughout the past few years, I mean, I just, you know, really feel like this is the person that represents us well. I trust her legal judgment. You know, we may disagree on certain things, but for the most part, I think she represents the city very well. And so I will be voting in favor of this.
Councilmember Frey?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. First, I believe that when you lead a department, all of your employees under you are tentacles. And that department has been doing an extraordinary job on a day-in, day-out basis. I mean, whether it's legal counsel, or advice, or negotiating...